And adoption of the agenda. Welcome, everyone. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
[inaudible] 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 Next on our agenda is comments from the audience, but we're gonna wait because as part of our music report a little bit later, we're gonna actually get to see our performers.
So at this time, I'd like to introduce our awesome musical students in the band program. Chris, you wanna go ahead?
Sure. This is the Whitman High School's Simon and Chris's discussion, and we thought we'd get you guys started with a little music this evening. So if you've seen the movie The Incredibles, you may remember the robot play for you. So we hope you enjoy it.
Well, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. We're going to excuse the kids if that's okay.
You may go. Thank you all for coming, taking the extra time and showing us how great you all are. Thank you.
That's harsh, man.
Honest, but harsh.
Yeah, really good.
Thank you.
Wait, can I?
Oh.
You can say no?
You don't want to?
I have an option.
Oh, maybe no. You don't want to?
You can state your vote.
Oh. No, that's good.
I heard Mason was quiet in the background. That's great, Mason. Get all dressed up.
That was very nice. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. If anyone would like to address the board, we ask that you state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes. Would anyone care to address the board tonight? Would anyone care to address the board? Seeing none, we will move to our number four reports, and we'll start with committee reports. Let's see. How about Stephanie? Would you like to start?
I don't.
We got one yet.
Okay. Since the last report. So we should have one in December.
That sounds great. Policy report?
Yes, we have, moving right along, we have level-two items that we are working on. We had Lori and Chris and Matt in this week, in this past month, to give us some input on some policies, and we have three first readings tonight.
Thank you. For those of you that may not know what level-two means, we had the Wisconsin Association of School Boards do a review of all of our policies, and there were different levels of concern, I think is how you could say it. So we're continuing to make sure that our policies are up to date, thanks to the chair, the Garry Fisher chair of the committee, probably. So thank you, Quinn. Okay. I better say the same with my other committee chairs, or they're in trouble. Okay, Nancy, personnel?
And then, we met last Monday. We really talked about three different things. First of all, we talked about the teacher early retirement proposal that was put out again. You know, we looked at it last week at the board meeting. So there was that one item about the $35,000 amount tied to the insurance payment. So we had a very long discussion about that, and it will go to the finance committee meeting next week when they meet. So we'll have to have a little more discussion about that in the finance committee meeting. And then, I had asked Doug to provide us with some health insurance information for the coming years, and so he met with our health insurance consultant, and we have kind of a timeline of kind of the changes that we're gonna need to make in the coming years, so that we will not be tied to that Cadillac tax in 2018. So we have some changes that'll be going along the next couple of years to, so that we can avoid that huge payment, that huge tax. And then, we also talked a little bit about, we have an account that our accounting department has to pay periodically for past retirees, and so we looked at that, and if there are any ways that we can pay out some of those accounts to the, to these people that have long since retired from Whitman, so that it would create a lesser burden on our accounting staff. So I've asked Lowell and Doug to go and get a legal opinion on some of these issues, and they'll bring this back, and hopefully, we'll have that to go to the finance committee as well.
Thank you. Again, our efficient chair is taking us through some complex issues. Personnel committee. Did you have a legislative report?
Well, I say, I think we, between the two of us, we can, it was a busy week for legislators. So it started out Friday morning with a legislative breakfast, and we had four legislators with us. You can probably help me who they were. Mary Lazick.
Ken Skaronsky.
Mike Kuglich.
Mike Kuglich.
And Craig.
Ken Skaronsky.
David Craig.
David Craig.
Right. So all the same geographic area is nice.
And then, so we kinda talked with, we just kinda talked with them about what's, you know, the best way to kinda reach them and kind of advocate for our needs, or let them know what's going on. And we talked a little bit about some of the things, like maybe advancing skills with our tech ed. So, you know, it was just kind of a nice face-to-face meeting with them, which was really nice. And then, from there, Friday afternoon, Luanne and I headed up to Stevens Point, Wisconsin, and attended on Saturday a legislative advocacy conference. And, well, I'm tired from that. But anyway, basically, we had someone that kinda talked with us regarding just, you know, the purpose of public education, you know, that it's, that it's for the whole community, it's publicly funded, we all need to invest in our students, there's accountability, and, you know, and on to kinda show that in national studies, that public schools, especially when you factor in, you know, factors like poverty rates, the public schools really do perform equal or better than the private schools. And that kinda led into the discussion of where we are at with private vouchers and independent charters, and kind of what might be on, going, you know, on the horizon as far as maybe that might be increasing or not increasing. Most likely increasing. So then, we also talked a little bit about the history of Common Core standards. There was a gentleman from the Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce, and he kinda, he actually spoke in favor of Common Core, because he felt that, you know, that it really, really makes for a nice, well, what is it, a consistent, competitive, more rigorous standard. And he talked about, a little bit about brain, how we have brain drain in this state, how for some reason, a lot of 18- to 34-year-olds seem to migrate to other states after they get their education. And so, really, there was some discussion about what Wisconsin needs to do to make it a state that is strong in manufacturing and business, and desirable for our young educated talent to stay. It, I mean, this was just a really long day. So if I'm getting a little lengthy, that's why. So, so anyway, those were some of the things that were presented to us. And then, at lunch, they also had presented what the 2000, well, 13, I remember that one, right? 2014 delegate assembly resolutions would be accurate, it's gonna be 2015. So we'll go through those resolutions at the January 12 meeting, and then we'll need as a group to decide what our position will be on those resolutions, so that Jonathan or I, whoever attends the delegate assembly and convention, will know what to do. And we heard from our state Senator Luther Olson, who is the Senate Education Committee Chair, and from State Representative Steve Castell, who has actually retired. But it was kind of interesting just to hear their perspective of, you know, what has been happening and what they expect to happen in the next legislative. And that was, it was busy. Did I miss anything?
Wow.
There's, I mean, there's so much.
Did she miss anything?
What else?
A whole day's work.
No, that's pretty good. That's a very good update. I just want, the statistic that jumped out at me is that we looked at the number of kindergartners entering versus the 10,065-year-olds that are retiring every day, or 10,000 people that are reaching 65 every day. So being aware that this population boom is moving through, and that for us as educators, we really need to make sure that all of our students are prepared, because there's gonna be a labor shortage if all of our kids are not prepared to fill those jobs in the future. So it made, again, it made me just more aware of how important the work is that we do.
Right. And the little discussion was find out what those skill sets are going to be, so we match where the jobs are, because we're gonna really need every student, and that was, that was kind of important. Every student's gonna be really important.
Very helpful. So I think that's about it. Next up, we would have superintendent's report, and that would be Dr. Holtz.
He's dimming the lights, so you can see better. Not for naptime, John. All right. I always thought it was a good thing to start with what the district mission statement is. This was done way before I got here, and I still love it today, because it talks about our kids being contributing members of a global society, and that's kind of the theme nowadays. We're not competing with Greendale or Greenfield for jobs in the future. We're competing across the nation and across the world. Couple of simple observations. I think I'm gonna put them all up at one time. One of the positives about our community, our district, is that we're very, children are our future, number-one priority. I don't think you'll get any argument from people on that one. We're a very family and community-centered organ, or community. Child safety is very important. Healthy environments is important. I mean, you're doing a lot of work towards that with our surveys and stuff that are going out to the community now. We work on adapting curriculum, so the kids get a personalized educational experience. And again, the focus is on student learning and achievement, so they can be prepared when they leave here. All right. Changes here, you've seen this before, but you look at things like open enrollment, timelines have expanded. It used to be a two-week window, and that was very solid. You had two weeks to apply for open enrollment. If you missed it, too bad. It's now months, and even if you miss the timeline, you can ask for an exception. And exceptions, if we say no, usually are overturned. So, I mean, it's very open enrollment friendly. Charter schools, we had a discussion today about charter schools at our forward-thinking meeting. One of the things I forgot to throw in there was, the state is strongly considering a statewide board, which means it would take the power to authorize charter schools out of the school, local school district hands. So it might be a time to investigate that further, if there's some advantage to our kids and our community for that. And then, voucher schools, I think everybody knows the cap's not gonna stay on. Right now, it's capped at a couple hundred kids outside of the city of Milwaukee, but it's gonna, I believe, be blown open a lot more. More changes in the past five years than in the past 50, easily. NAP, Common Core, educator effectiveness, it's been quite a change.
Could you explain those just a little bit, what those all are?
I can. NAP is National Assessment, and when we go into the scores later, it's really kinda fascinating, because our state took the, originally, I did this with years five through 10, and now I was adding 10 through 15. And you really can't do a direct comparison, because everything from 2010 through 2015, remember, they made the change in 2012? That was the year we pointed out that we had, Edgerton, I think, had that class, 100% of their kids were proficient and advanced. They applied the NAP standards, and they dropped down to about 57, 58%, something like that. I don't remember the exact numbers. But they did that retroactively. So it's, it's hard, but you can do comparisons geographically, which is kind of what we'll see later. Common Core is basically, whether people like Common Core or not, it is a big jump over what we had for standards before. It, which is great. I mean, it raises the bar. It's hard to tell a kid, hey, you had 100% on the test, you're proficient, you're advanced, now he wants to do better. I just got 100%. You know, but, you know, you're gonna see that. So, I mean, we do have raised the bar for our kids. Educator effectiveness, it's a way of assessing teachers, assessing programs, assessing principals, assessing school districts, to see, you know, they focus on achievement, not just on whatever the delivery happens to be. This district was well-prepared. NAP's been around for a long time. Wisconsin students were not measuring up. That was the political, you know how we were talking about the political advocacy? Listening, talking to the legislators, and all those things that we've been doing, helped us understand that this was coming. It was coming down the road. We prepared for it, and the district, the board gave us the permission to put things in alignment, so that our kids weren't gonna be successful. Yeah, there you go. The board has always been committed to educating children, the community has. One of the things I find fascinating is the statistic that the bottom one, we're educating our children for jobs that don't even exist yet. Because you know how fast the world is changing, and so all those soft skills that they want us to have, for the kids to have, the STEM, the background, so that whatever the job is, they have the ability to be competitive in it. What's the strength of the Whitman School District? You know, as compared to charter schools, voucher schools, private schools, parochial schools, our strength is in the fact that we're a community school. Successful schools lead to successful communities. Forward-thinking recognize that. They, our neighbors recognize that. So we're trying to strengthen our community partnerships through collaboration, and sharing our success with our different communities. District demographics. I wanna, again, I'll put them all up right away, but the reason I'm going through demographics is not because they're excuses for, for performance, because there's no such thing as excuses for that. However, there are reasons for adapting how you deliver instruction. I'll get into that in just a little bit here. Students with disabilities, through 2013, it looks like we stayed pretty consistent, but if you look back even further, you can see how it's grown, and at least in 2013, we were over 15%. I think 2014 will be higher, probably 17, 18 or more.
Is that percentage?
Percentage, yes. Percentage of them. And basically, what that tells you is, it's one of those focus areas where we invest money to try to make sure every, like you said, every student has to walk out here with the ability to hold a job of some kind. You know, so we wanna take care of all of our kids. Economically disadvantaged, that's a, that's a pretty easy one to see. We went up quite a bit from '05, when I started here, at about 10% to over 25% now. And that's measured, they do that through the free and reduced and stuff like that. Enrollment history, and I, this is, I tied in open enrollment in 2020. And I'll put this out, so on the board page in the website, if you want, so people can see it. But this is, that's the net open enrollment. We started with '85 and '03, '04. 13, 14, we're at 284 kids. We used to participate a lot more heavily in 2020. You notice, we basically started at 113, and we're down to about 39 now. And...
Can you describe what 2020 is?
Yeah. It's, originally, it was a more of a desegregation program through the city of Milwaukee, and they bused kids to the, I remember when I was a kid, reading it in the papers, that bused kids to the suburbs, and it was always very controversial when it started, but it's been very successful. The gentleman from, from, was it Whitefish Bay Principal, that just passed, was one of our 2020 students at Whitman. And so we've been very successful with, you know, no complaints about our 2020 program, and it's actually financially beneficial to the district as well, which I'll show you here in just a minute.
Do we have to be minorities to participate in the 2020, or not? Just from Milwaukee?
I know we, we can have kids that go both ways, so I think you have to be minorities coming from Milwaukee. Joel is doing the report later. Is that accurate?
So it has to be minorities? Okay.
Yeah. It's minorities from Milwaukee out, and then non-minorities going in.
Okay.
Is that the requirement?
Yeah.
And then the busing and such?
Uh-huh. Okay. And then, but the good, the advantage for parents in 2020 versus open enrollment is the busing. So, I mean, we have kids from the north side of Milwaukee, over by Timmerment, that participate.
We don't pay for that busing?
We do not pay for that.
Program busing?
Taxes.
Taxes, but I mean, it doesn't come out of district budget?
No, not district, not local. Just some growth. Wisconsin started in '03, '04 with 13,700, so almost 14,000, and in 13, 14, they were at 42, so they basically increased by about 60%, a little bit more. And Whitman was increased a little bit less than 60%. So we're kinda mirroring the state. And then, the financial part, or the advantages, those kids are spread out over 13 grade levels, K4 through 12, and they brought in 1.8 million. The 2020 students are about 39. Those, that's done differently. It's a general age increase, I believe, and that was another 370,000. Staffing, I know we talked about this in the past. How do we compare? I did a comparison with the Woodland District. It's easy to do when you go on the DPI website. Anybody in the audience or up here can do that as well, the public portal. But we had 14.2 students per teacher, that's what that stands for, which is slightly better than the 14.37 to every teacher that is a Woodland Conference. So we did a little bit better in our student-teacher ratio there. In our student-to-staff ratio, which is support staff they're talking about generally, Whitman's was 23.8 to one, so we're a little heavier staffed in support staff than the rest of the Woodland Conference. But again, a lot of that, and most of our support staff now, it's driven by special needs, and you need to take care of all of our kids, and part of that is an increase in specialized staffing sometimes. Not always. Sometimes it goes down.
So that includes, when you, okay, it's not administrative staffing?
Good question, then. Administratively, we're, you, that's where you want the number to be bigger than the rest of, you know, so you're not over-admin staffed. So compare it to the rest of the Woodland Conference, we're, we're a little bit better. And if you took out some of the huge districts, you know, the Tulsa and stuff, we would be substantially better than the Greenfield, or I mean, Greendale, Pewaki, you know, the neighboring ones more. So I guess that tells you is proportionally, we're doing pretty darn good. Here is some of the, you'll, I'm gonna go through these rather quickly, because they all pretty much say the same thing. Our kids are always around 90% that were proficient and advanced in reading. This is our combined district score.
Is that the WK?
WKCE.
Former, okay.
Exactly. That was the old state test. It's, there is still a small portion of the WKCE that's left, but they measure it a different way, and then retroactively. Language arts district combined, again, that was from '05 through, basically up to '2010. And so, you can see how the district, what you'll notice in these, the district kinda plateaued over those years. It was kind of a flat, well, high-performing, they're doing a good job, but it is kind of plateauing. Science, and it, you know, it'll change every year, up or down a percentage point. There's nothing wrong or odd about that. Comparatively, that's one of the ways you can see, no matter how they do the testing, or what tests they're using, if you can compare it to the same group of people, you can kinda get an indication of how well you're doing. Didn't do too badly in comparison in those years to our, our neighbors, at least the ones that are listed there. They're outscored a little bit in math over those, that period of time. Again, this is '05 through '09. The NAP effect, this is '10 through '14, and basically, they took the, I mean, when we, like I said, when we hit 100%, that 11, 12 school year, once they, they scored it from the national perspective, our scores went down. And the reason they did that is, on the WKCE, the Department of Public Instruction could set the bar. They could say, if you have 56% of the questions right on a 100-scale test, you're proficient. And each year, they would raise that up a little bit. Well, not each year, it was every couple of years they did it, because the goal was, by the time you got to 20-something, everybody was gonna be 100% proficient and advanced. And the states could, had the right to set the speed of getting up there, and that's why you would have such disproportionate and wide variety in states where kids are proficient and advanced here, and they're failing over here. So this put a national perspective on the state's test, and if the only thing you measured your school district on was the state test, it was great. But once you went beyond our state's borders, that was a concern, which is why our district toolled up, so that we could start looking at the NAP tests and be a little bit more competitive, starting statewide and then nationally.
Are these our, these are not our, are these our kids?
These are ours.
These are our kids?
These are our kids. Now, how does that, now, remember I said the other? Now, how does that, now, remember I said the other way to do it is to see, over this past five years then, how they do comparatively to those kids they compared themselves, well, people compared them to before. That's the next part.
What subject was that, do you know? The NAEP?
I think this was the combined. This is, you could do a comparison, which we showed you before, like on the district report card, you can, you can take people's scores and see how, where do we rank in comparison to them? And you can do that over a period of years, and you can start to see the graph. The most powerful one is, if we're a continuous improvement philosophy type of school district, do we go up every year? And this is the best graph to show you how our kids performed over the past five years, because it shows an increase year-over-year WKCE test scores. So every year, we've gone up in our WKCE. So that's something that the board can, and the school district can be proud of, that's something the realtors show the people coming into town when they want to sell them a house. They show them the, the six, relative success like that. General observations, good district, with above-average scores. Had been at a plateau, but it was a high-performing school district. The focus has been on going from good to great, stealing the title of a good book. We raised the bar locally, so our kids could compete on a... Curriculum or current tools that had an effect on achievement, this, before I came here, this district was heavily into professional learning communities. They used to send people down to Illinois to get training in it, and so the, I mean, it was there, it was ready to just take and, and run with. And I think that was something that was very powerful that was in place before I started. Then, we do very well at collaboration, we flattened our supervisory model, where we have weekly administrative meetings rather than, you know, monthly or whatever it was. Teacher leaders, and when I say very dedicated staff, I'm taking the, I mean, we have great teachers, but I'm taking the focus off the teachers. I mean, when I go downstairs and I hear one of our custodians giving a pep talk to the custodians that are coming in, about, you guys, come on, we gotta get this done, we gotta, they have a positive attitude, we can do this, that kinda stuff, it almost gives you goosebumps watching it. When you see the, our kitchen people interacting with the kids in such a positive way, everything creates, or goes to creating the environment in the school district where you can walk parents through here, and they can see it and they can feel it when they walk through, which is one of the reasons why we don't have any problems attracting open enrollment students or two-point. This you've seen before. Board goals, community vision, partnerships, data-driven decision-making, increased expectations, these are all keys to improving districts, transparency, so there's respect, and you build up that, those relationships. Extended learning opportunities, and it's gotta be a community team effort, like we're trying to do it forward-thinking. You know, you gotta make it a, a team. Community relations are very important, our community has to feel like we really value them, value their input. Our relations with our community are gonna drive our success on any future referendum, or, and our efforts to provide the best educational opportunities for our kids. I mean, it's, it's all tied to, how does our community feel about us? Healthy and positive relationships, and then focused and positive, provide the best educational opportunities for our kids. Almost done, short one or two left. Going from good to great, has a strong educational team, our kids need to help us keep our focus to give them the best opportunities, and our kids will do that. Everyone, everyone will know the Woodmill School District is a great place for kids. I think we're, we've really taken a big step, when we brought Dave Cody on as our community relations person, huge step in public relations. I mean, anybody that's been around here for a while could, could really see that. And our educational team's gonna keep moving forward. Awesome district, children are successful, parents see that, and they want it for their kids. And I, I really believe this is a good place for, I mean, we have a product that our country needs, when we can do this kinda job with kids. And our graduates are trained to make a difference in the world, and we have a lot of graduates that have shown that. This is just a philosophy thing. You don't look backwards, you look forwards. You know, things are changing constantly, and you look for the best way to serve the kids in our community. That's it, except for the cute animated guy dancing.
All right, thank you. That was a nice overall picture of the, the district and how we're doing. All right, does anyone have any questions?
Thanks.
Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. Next up, we'll have new course proposals for the 2015-16 academic year. Very interesting, very interesting. So who's gonna give us that report?
Any questions?
Each year, we come to you about this time to talk about the courses for the following year, and typically, the way it works is we have teachers come to principals, who then work with those teachers to develop course proposals, and then I meet with the principals or those teachers, and we just look kinda from a district-wide perspective where things are, and where we're going. So, the three proposals that came to us this year, the Rock Band Two class is actually an extension of our Rock Band One class, which has its first running this year. Dr. Holtz, myself, and Dave Cody had the fortunate experience to see a, a performance assessment actually in the auditorium, where the students during, in the rock band not only performed, but also critiqued each other and ran all the lights, sound, and everything else, so that was pretty, pretty, pretty amazing. So that's the one proposal. The other two proposals are, yes?
Is that because there's so many kids wanted, or is it the next step after one?
Uh, whatever the proposal talked about, I think...
He said ninety-five percent of the kids wanted it.
It talked about kids wanting it, and the, the thing is, we don't know how many students want these classes until they sign up for them. So this is just saying that we're gonna offer the course, it doesn't mean it's gonna run. So as far as, once students sign up, if we meet the, the board has their, the limit of eighteen as the threshold, and then we go from there. So then the other two courses that were proposed are, are new courses, well, actually, one's an adaptation, but the, the other high school course is Beginning Band. And as you could see from the proposal, the rationale for the Beginning Band course was actually based upon the high school band teacher's personal experience of beginning his career as a parochial school student who didn't have access to or exposure to music. And had he not gone to a public middle school, and then eventually a public high school, he wouldn't have been able to be involved in band. And so, myself also being someone who had attended parochial schools and hadn't been exposed to it until later in life, which is why there's a skills gap between his and mine, it, it's, it's an opportunity for students who come to us either from another school district, or students who haven't been involved with music thus far, to really get into Beginning Band. So it's a course designed from the ground up. We're gonna start right, right from here, as, as a freshman or sophomore, or even junior or senior, for you to, to kind of wet your chops with music, and see if we can get you down that road. The last proposal is a middle school course. Mr. Jaikle's also here, middle school tech teacher over there, and he did a, a really great job of outlining for you what you can see. We talk a lot about college and career readiness, and that, the fact that it's not all about college, well, his, his object in this course is to really look at that, and if you look at the offerings that he's talking about, it's a college or and/or career path that he's offering, and this is really the future of tech, and what we've been looking at, K-12. We have CAD classes, for example, in the high school, we have the computer technology, we have all that great stuff, and Mr. Jaikle's proposal is really to start beginning, the beginnings of those in a more seamless way at the, the middle school level. So it's truly the beginnings of, of what could be considered a STEM-type track.
So true confessions, you have, you and Chris both play in bands, I believe?
Yes.
From time to time, so appreciate your perspective on this. Okay, can we, can we do one at a time and see what the board might have questions for? We'll start with the Beginning Band. Does anyone have questions on that?
Sure.
Two, three.
Happy to start this one off. First of all, thank you for recognizing that music is valuable regardless of the amount of years of experience behind you, and it should be open to anyone who's interested. That is, that is a big deal, so thank you for recognizing that. But with the high, with offering Beginning Band at the high school level, one of the things in the course proposal was noted that, that it's not always fair to a student who's just beginning to be with a group that's been performing for the last five to eight years together. So my question is, is Beginning Band then its own little capsule? Or, or do you stay in Beginning Band for a year or two, and then you move into the next level of band to be with other, how, how, what timeline are you envisioning for Beginning Band?
Basically, you know, I mean, I think it depends on the student. As a music department, we've come up with four domains to assess students on, and they may be very strong in one domain and, and a little bit weaker in one of the others. So, you know, I think it's a student-by-student basis. I teach private lessons, and I've seen, you know, students pick up an instrument, and in six months, astound, you know, me, because you, you know what that normal track is, but it's, it's kind of dependent on the student that way. Absolutely, I would say that it could, you know, go either way, it's kind of a class that's designed so that a student could, could start out the instrument, and then, you know, maybe a semester bump up to the second group, or, or, you know, a higher group that way. Once again, I think it's just dependent on the student's progress level in the course itself.
So what, what future needs do you see then for this particular group, if some may end up staying with it maybe a year or two, or only a semester? What, what kind of needs? Is it just gonna be the basic materials, or do you think...
Yeah, I mean, basically, you know, for us, there's not a cost factor involved, a lot of the students would rent instruments, and, you know, you know, as instruments start to depreciate, obviously, that would be, you know, a future need perhaps, that would come to the board for. But in terms of costs, the, the cost is pretty minimal, we have a lot of the music already. Yeah.
And then would there be some peer mentoring going on, so that you have some of the advanced students?
Well, that's the other thing, I mean, if a student, you know, let's say that they're, they're really strong in literacy part of, of, you know, what they're doing, but when it comes to the performance part, maybe they're not quite understanding it yet. That's where, you know, in a class where maybe they've taken it for six months, and they're really strong in this area, there can be peer-to-peer mentoring to where they can help out with their classmates, or, you know, we can even structure it in a way that if a student who's very advanced in, in one of our higher ensembles wants to come and join that class, they could do teaching to, you know, one of the, the student groups in the Beginning Band course.
Okay, I'm excited to see how this one develops.
Yeah, I got a, a few questions. First off, I, I must admit that it's not often, I don't think, when we, when we hear or we read claims, like this playing musical instrument typically requires simultaneous, you know, et cetera, et cetera, the bottom of Beginning Band, page two, several behavioral, neuropsych, physiological and neuroimaging studies have explored, blah, blah, and you actually have the references. I appreciate that, because a lot of folks make claims on a lot of stuff, and they, they're just claims. You guys have the, the references there, and I do appreciate that. Questions I have are, how would this, well, first off, the schedule, you talk about, I, I don't know about hours per day, or days per week, or anything like that, that you're talking about. And that, that all ties in with a limited amount of resources, which involves not just, not just money, but, but time and personnel. So some of my questions are gonna involve, involve that. I'm not picking on it, I just, I'm trying to, these questions, I wrote them down as I was reading this thing, and, and I thought, you know, I'm not doing, I'm supposed to be doing if I don't try and get some light on it, so...
And maybe, Tony, can you enlighten us about how we do course additions?
Yeah, I think we, we can't tie this to that, because it's, all we're asking for is that we can offer this course. So if, if we, for example, offer the course, and we don't hit the eighteen student threshold, we can't offer the course. Or, or we may very well, what ends up happening is that the, because the, the resources are finite and limited, I mean, as far as a matrix is concerned, we have so many periods in a day, so many staffing we can, so it's a shift. So we may, for example, if you have more students taking music, we may experience fewer kids taking some, some other elective, whatever it may be. So in the end, as far as actual staffing, offs, it offsets, but it may look a little bit differently in the music department.
So my concern is that, how would this affect other curricula, like either in the music department, because of, again, time, money, staffing availability? If you offer this, or we, we approve this, then are we gonna end up finding out that something else has dropped out that, that was an unintended consequence? You know what I'm saying? Because we are dealing with a, with a finite amount of, of resources, regardless of how you wanna, which resource you wanna talk about. So what would happen, what could happen to other curricula in the music department, or even outside of the music department? And then also, you talked about advanced student enrollment, what about the other courses they're in? And advanced student enrollment into the, advanced, I suppose, music students enrolling into this beginning class? I mean, why was that mentioned in there, and what's the idea behind that?
Basically, my rationale for that, you know, would be if a student is on a track, you know, and this might be a, a very, you know, select track, but if that student perhaps is a senior, and they've taken band for, you know, a good amount of years, and maybe they're on like a track where they want to go into music later on, I think it's gonna be a perfect opportunity for them to, you know, get some beginning teaching, hands-on sort of experiences. Right now with adaptive music, we have a very similar thing to where, you know, some students that want to learn a little bit about teaching those sort of things, we have them volunteer for adaptive music, and I think they gain some really valuable skills from that.
This may be more of a formal way of, of offering, almost in one of those internal internship kinda things we're talking about, and getting credit for it? Okay. And then...
Actually, I have a, a follow-up thought on this, 'cause it just popped in. Some of these students were probably students that were going to be in the band program, and anyway, so that they may not necessarily represent a shift out of something else, because they were looking to maybe be with band, but yet they were, like you had said, that, you know, they, it would be difficult for them to...
Correct, yep.
You know, to just kinda jump in with the regular band. So we might not be shifting them out of anything else, we're just putting them in the band, but putting them in...
Putting them in a situation, I think that would make it more comfortable for them to, yep.
The philosophy is, and, and this is where we shifted, what, two years ago, I think, or three years ago, we started offering these, was in music, instead of the traditional sense of having three particular strands, where you have the vocal music and then two instrumentals, and Chris will talk about this when he goes up there later, but getting students who are typically non-traditional musicians, because we have, every one of us is a musician in our own way, some of us are just not as, as great as other ones. And the idea was getting, having opportunities for all students to be involved at, at any level. And in our current system, we track them very, very early on, which is a plus, but it's also a minus if you're not the person who was involved from the very beginning. This is an opportunity that if you come into the district at that point, or maybe you haven't made that decision yet, I mean, we have a lot of students who play youth sports, when they get to high school, they don't wanna do the sport thing anymore. They wanna try band, well, like the, the proposal says, if I have to play with kids who've been playing for four, five, six, seven years, it's, it's kind of intimidating. This is an opportunity to, to try it out.
Okay, and then on page, well, here it says Beginning Band, page four, it's, you have essential questions there. Through the course of this Beginning Band, where kids are just, students are just learning to maybe pick up, handle, and play some of these instruments, are they really going to, are these here as, these are questions that you intend for them to arrive at, at answers to in the course of the...
Basically, I mean, you know, it's, it's basically a shaping for the course itself, you know, those are things that I think constantly, you know, guide what we are doing musically in the classroom, and actually, you know, some of those, when we met as a department last year, those are very similar, as you look at chorus and orchestra, and concert band right now, and some, saphony, and some percussion, you know, those same sort of essential questions that, you know, we come back to on a daily basis with students, you know, how does, I, I don't think, you know, you can take so many situations and so many pieces that you're working on with students and, and apply it to those questions. How does, you know, we're playing a piece tomorrow, Amazing Grace, what, how does the history, you know, tie in with it?
And is that discussed in band?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. You know, I mean, we don't just, I think some people, you know, think that, that band is merely, you know, stand up and, you know, play our instruments, that sort of thing, but there's so much more that, that goes into it, you know, it's understanding the history and the culture and the science behind what you're doing, you know, when you blow into brass instrument, and you don't put any fingers down, but the notes changes, you know, why does that happen? And, you know, it directly ties into what they talk about with Mr. Benjamin in physics class, and, you know, those sort of things, they're trying to make as many connections as possible.
Okay, yeah, and I would say that, that I, I'm impressed of trying to expand the music program, I think that's great. I'd be amiss if I, if I didn't point out that for years, I have parents talking to me about, about marching band in the curriculum, and that kinda thing, and I think we talked briefly about that last summer. So, so though I like seeing the idea of expanding some of the music department, I have questions for the Rock Band Two thing as well, but we, we'll get to that when we get there. But, but I know I'm gonna have people talk to me about that piece of, so you guys are wanting to add these music courses, and yet we still aren't putting marching band back in the curriculum. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I can see that coming.
Any other questions? I just had one or two, actually. I just had one or two actually. There's a fee for the music, is that it? Is that typical in band, we all have to charge a student a fee or?
Students are not, no, in.
Or is that a fee we pay?
Right, I'm sorry, those are just materials I, the way I put it, are materials that we would need. So pretty minimal, but just, you know, getting some new.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just glad to hear it's not going to the student.
Yep.
And then the second question, my daughter, when she was in band.
Yep.
She had an opportunity to do that mentoring thing. She got to go over to actually another school.
Yep.
And work with a huge program. She eventually went into band, uh, music, music education. She was able to get a little bit of a, a quarter of a credit for doing that? Is it possible, if this works out, that we could look at that?
Yeah, that's a different, yep. I mean, that's a different discussion with our internships and.
Right. When you get there, it would be my suggestion that that would really be a neat way to provide more of an incentive for students who might want to try this out and get a little bit of credit as well, that makes it a more formal process to, so that was it. Thank you. Great, looks great. I'm hearing no objections, I'm assuming everyone wants to see that come forward. All right, next up, we have the.
So we do Rock Band Two now or?
Yeah, yep, Rock Band Two, yep. Next question, John. Go ahead.
Oh, I don't want to start.
Anyone else have questions?
Sure. Okay, so.
Well, I'm trying to take turns.
When we, when we first, when you first brought.
Rock Band One, I had said I just heard parents celebrating all over because we need the kids out of the garage, out of the basement, into the classroom and really doing something that they loved. What I am excited to see is that you are continuing it and you're supporting it. And I think that speaks volumes again to our music program. So I just want to commend you for recognizing the need, offering it, hopefully they'll take you up on it, in that you're looking at alternatives to those that may not be purely instrumental or a non-traditional instrumentalist and that you are following through and supporting what you started. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right. Anyone else? Because John wants to wait and go last. Seeing none, John, you're up.
Okay. Here we go. No. So I, I, I did have written down the same concerns about, you know, the assets or the, you know, the, what we have for time and personnel and, and money and that kind of stuff, so, but just to reiterate that, reiterate that for this course, but also, and how it affects other curricula. The, it talks, you mentioned how, how ninety-five percent of Rock Band, or we might refer to just RB One or whatever, students, you know, have asked about a follow-on course. How many is that? Because ninety-five percent sounds like a lot, but, I mean, so it's the majority, clearly the majority of the, the guys and the people in the class, but how many are in the class?
Current enrollment is over twenty, low twenties.
Okay.
Thank you. From what I recall, in Rock Band.
The Rock Band Two proposal is a proposal for Mr. Katie, not for Mr. Noah, just to clarify.
Okay, thanks. And, and then the, it mentions trying to up the percentage of involvement of the overall student body, because currently it's at something like twenty-eight percent of the student body involved in the music programs. And in, as far as the Rock Band Two course goes, it seems as though, it doesn't, I mean, even though it's mentioned in here to try to, as, as one of the arguments, to try to improve the participation of the student body, it, it seems like that it wouldn't really, it doesn't really target that because it, again, ninety-five percent of the ones in the first class want the second class and with exception, you know, appealing to the instructor teaching the course, otherwise you would kind of have to have Rock Band One as a prerequisite. So I don't really see how the, the argument in here of trying to increase, of this particular offering of a course, trying to increase the percentage of student body involvement in music, that, how it actually goes towards that, unlike the Beginning Band piece which clearly would.
So the, the first thing is there's not a required, it's Rock Band or express permission. So let's say, for example, there's a group of students who are already in band and they may benefit from bypassing all the basic learning on the, the soundboard, so that would be one way. The second piece is many of our students are not looking for semester-long courses, they're looking for year-long courses because their schedules fill up and they're looking for them for the ability to go to a more advanced level. So they, if, if it's just kind of a one-stop shop, one semester, Level One, that's it, what do I do? What do I do second semester? You know, how do I expand what I'm doing? And then again, part of the idea with this whole piece is, again, that student mentoring, just like we talked about with the, with the Beginning Band, getting the mentoring piece so that you have older students or second-year students or second-level students connecting with first-level students, students teaching students. And this, this does tie directly to one of our internships, actually two of our internships, we have lights and sound interns in the district. So students are learning not only the band stuff, but I, when I, we looked in there, I was kind of jealous of the setup that they did because these kids knew how to set up everything and there were hardly any wires and they knew exactly which, you know, things that take me hours to figure out and I usually don't do it very well anyway, they, they've got it all figured out. So they're learning a lot more, it's not just a bunch of kids like hanging out in the garage and, and jamming away. There's a very real way of looking at it, they look at the music history, they're performing Beatles ensembles, they're talking about things, music through history. So there was a lot more to it. So I think Level Two is all about, how can we get this, you know, go a little bit deeper and increase the likelihood that kids stick with it.
So you're saying a more complete offering and maybe you'll get a larger enrollment in Rock Band One next time around?
That's what we're anticipating.
Okay. All right, makes sense. And is there in fact, because I, I saw allusions to it, but then there was, or I saw some, you allude to it in some places, but, but indicate in others that public performance is not required or? It is?
It's not required.
Okay. All right. And a, a bunch of this mentions common core, college readiness standards and also is, is the technical, so I just wondered, in that list on page, Rock Band Two, page three, you list all that stuff. Are we not meeting that now? And if we are, I'd, I'd like to know how we're, if that is common core standard stuff, then I don't see how we would be meeting it for the seventy-two percent of the student body that aren't in music at the high school? And if, and if we're.
I'm not, I'm not following.
Okay.
So Paige, do you have a page number?
Rock Band Three, Rock Band Two, page three. And it looks to be page, I don't know, something in the.
Music standards?
Yes.
Standards and benchmarks at the bottom.
Direct music, direct music domains and state music standards.
These are state music standards, correct, not common core.
Okay.
They're state music standards. So the state says if you're offering a music course, then these are the standards that you should be working on.
Okay, so that's it, if you're offering, okay, alrighty. And then you also mentioned the technical terminology relates to audio engineering, I can't remember where I saw that, but.
Actually, these domains are what Mr. Noah could talk about before, these four domains are on our report cards, kindergarten through twelfth grade. So even our, even our, our youngest students are getting assessed on those four main domains. So they run through all of our music offerings. And that's, again, back to what we had talked about, the shift in philosophy is.
Sure.
We're not here to practice, we're not here to just rehearse, we're not here to get better at a, at a specific piece, we're here to learn music. And if your education is about getting deeper rather than just on the surface, then we need to see the connections kindergarten through twelfth grade.
Great. Thanks very much.
Yep, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, for some kids, this is going to be, you know, the thing. So I'm really delighted to see we're offering it and I have to admit, I love rock music, but the only thing I can play is the radio, so a class like this might have helped me advance as, as I would hope, so, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have the Engineering Concepts One and Two. Thank you. Questions from the board on interviewing?
Um, not so much a question, I'm really excited, you know, to see that we were going to have something along those lines and the only, I guess this is really actually a question. I did run this by someone who had expressed interest in particular about this type of program and the only kind of thought he had was, you know, the, after seventh and eighth grade, are some of these skills that they're, you know, developing and working on available for them to continue at the high school level? I mean, I know, for example, like, you know, we have the CAD and we have the programming. That was just kind of his concern that, you know, to give the opportunities to continue to grow, that they take in seventh, eighth grade and then they don't look at it again until, until they graduate. So that was just the one concern that kind of.
Yeah, Mr. Jekyll and I have talked about that and he's got a really clear vision as to where we need to go. And what, a lot of what we've talked about is the fact that it's not about being the middle school tech ed teacher and then the high school tech ed teacher, it's about playing to strengths of those teachers. And Mr. Johannes is really great with the hands-on tech piece and Mr. Jekyll, not that they're not good across, they both teach both classes, but Mr. Jekyll's specialty and deepest interests is in this vein. So he is looking at how we can kind of move forward in, in this vision. We currently do have the structures to support that, we have Project Lead the Way through the consortium available at Union Field High School. We do a lot of youth options with basic engineering courses, advanced math courses. So those are there, they're just not necessarily visibly in-house and that's mainly because we don't have the numbers at this particular point in time to support that. But we're thinking that as we start retooling our, our programs with great courses like this, that we're going to spark a little bit more interest and then hopefully see that growth once they get to the high school.
Any other questions?
Well, this one, this one is more of a scheduling and how it fits in because I, I certainly understand how you can have a course offering at the high school for a semester long, they may take it maybe in the fall or maybe there's more interest in the spring with how flexible scheduling can be. In the middle school though, I'm trying to figure out how this fits into the day. Is this part of semester long, of nine weeks that they can trade off? How is this one fitting in?
It would be just like any of our other appliance classes, for example, art, students have art for a semester, so it would be similar to that. It would most likely be replacing our infotech class, which has sort of become outdated.
Okay.
So are you the one that is kind of spearheading? Well, I appreciate it. It's, it's not easy to, I'm sure, to, to step up and take, I mean, all the stuff you list here is, all I can say is, if you start doing, did, you know, the 3D printing and get a CNC machine or at least a programming stuff, you're going to need to, you're going to add space and I don't know what, but, but yeah. And is Vex Robotics, is that what they were talking to us at the First Robotics thing is, is how the kids get into at the middle school level? Do you know?
I don't know, I mean.
I was trying to remember what the, what the middle.
At first it's like a little bit different program, but it might be some of the, I don't know if you know.
Well, they mentioned.
Some of the same materials.
Is it First Technologies?
Well, they mentioned the first, that we went to our First Robotics thing, Dr. Holt's, we, no, Luanne.
Eileen.
I'm sorry, Eileen and I were there and, and they mentioned that at the middle school, it's a different program and I thought it was Vex Robotics, I don't know, but if you can get going with that kind of stuff at the middle school, and I'd heard that you had, had spoken up to maybe take some of that on, then.
Yeah, we have.
Then it brings up the possibility of offering, of getting a First Robotics program started at, at the high school.
We have, from when Project Lead the Way was done at the middle school, we have a complete cat classroom set of the Vex Robotics already. So I was, I can't find the curriculum for it, but it's there, it's ready to, wanting to be used. In the middle school, we just started this year also the Robotics Club and we're doing the first Lego League Robotics, so that's kind of getting us intro into it. I'm hoping that after the season is done, we'll keep meeting and I can get some of those guys down into those Vex Robotics with me and we can start figuring them out so that we can know what to do with them in the course.
Well, I, I really appreciate both of you guys, you know, looking at ways to expand offerings and, and go further into things because it's, it's too easy to just sit there and let ride the way, the way it is and I really appreciate the opportunities offered.
Well, one thing I did, I did want to point out is that Scott built this, Mr. Jekyll built this kind of by his, out of his own brain in the outline and that, and there's a reason for that. The reason we don't latch on to is things like a particular program is because there's typically, there's a brand cost. You're paying for it, you're paying for Project Lead the Way or you're paying for First Robotics. He pulled out all of the actual concepts that are there. So if, for example, we have an opportunity to have a First Robotics program or club, it can, it can easily be supplemented in there, but let's say First Robotics goes away and Second Robotics comes along, we don't need to be tied to First Robotics, we can just insert Second Robotics. So the idea is, is about building a system that will continue and maintain built upon concepts and that's malleable based upon what, what we see in the world around us. So, you know, 3D printers is one of those great things where six years ago you couldn't purchase a 3D printer for less than six grand and now you can buy one for your house for three hundred bucks that you can actually print candy on. So, believe it or not, you can't, so happy holidays, here's a printer, you know, make yourself some candy canes or whatever else, it's, it's just pretty wild. So the idea is that, is building the opportunities for students that are, that we can, we can meld based upon what the need is.
Mr. Jekyll said get the guys down there, is there female involvement as well?
Not at the moment. I, it was a scramble to get things all together at the beginning of the year, I had a very busy summer, so I'm hoping that once the, the season ends, which is through November, that I can re-advertise to students, because I did have a number that were in like cross-country that told me they wanted to be in robotics, but they couldn't because of cross-country or other sports, so I'm hoping that once the season's done and I can re-offer it and advertise and maybe have the guys take the table down at like lunch periods and show what we really have been doing, so we can get kind of more interest in it.
Great.
And possibly we can get some moms that are in the field to come in and, you know, and demonstrate that, you know, this, you know, this is not just a male, male field movement, females in there, so.
But that brings up, there are a number of, of, of parents in the district who, they talked to, you know, Eileen knows a couple I'm talking about, about pitching in and getting involved in some of these things where it's, whether it's club-based or, or curricular-based to help out.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I, just to point out, and I'm not trying to make excuses for anyone, but Scott is the only tech ed teacher for our middle school and we only have one tech ed teacher for the high school. So their, their time gets divided a lot when it comes to, you know, all this, all the stuff that, that is involved with that. So the two of them have been, you know, really kind of forced into reinventing this whole thing. So we're glad we're getting some traction with, with the, the STEM-type stuff in the Robotics Club and hopefully as it grows, there may be more people coming on board.
I was going to say, hopefully as it grows, we provide more support because this is the direction this board, I know many of you have talked to me about it, wants to go in, in terms of providing skills, basic programs like this for our kids, so I think this is fantastic. I just wondered if we couldn't bring the Rock Band in before one of our board meetings to start us off? And I would love to see maybe some of these projects coming out of the Robotics program or this new program. Maybe we could have a little demonstration on that sometime this spring. If we did something like this once a month, it would be great for us to continue to see how these programs are impacting our kids. So if that would work out, maybe we could have Kathy talk with you and schedule that?
And we could do our meeting in the auditorium if we needed to.
Yes, we could do that. We can move our meeting and see the Rock Band.
We'll have to run it by the kids first, remember, they weren't required to be public audiences, so if they don't.
They're not, ask them if they would.
But they may want to show.
They may, yeah, we just want to make sure they're okay with it.
Anything Bob Seeger, I'm good.
Oh, the Beatles, no, the Beatles.
Pick them all, he's got a lot of songs, really does.
The Beatles, right?
Like Boston or Windows.
Oh, they're overplayed.
The Beatles, okay. Well, thank you very much, any other comments? Seeing that, thank you for the proposals and we'll look forward to seeing how these work. Okay, next up, we have the Music Department District-wide Status Report. Thank you for all the information in this report and I look forward to having a discussion. Furthering our discussion on music.
While we're waiting for them to set up, throw a few comments out. I think Lynn deserves some recognition too because we were trying to push the Robotics program and she, when talking with her teachers, finally got someone to commit and we didn't give up, we kept trying and so, good educational leadership.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you guys, first of all, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and just thank you to the board and Dr. Holtz for your continued support of our music programs. We definitely appreciate that. So just wanted to start off by talking about music curriculum updates. And basically, over the past two years, our K-12 Music Department has sat down together many times and these are the domains that we came up with. Domains basically are the four categories that we feel students need to learn about, kindergarten through 12th grade. And what we did then, under these four domains, is we came up with learning targets to determine how students are best going to achieve these domains. So for the first one, music literacy, I thought I'd give you a little bit of an interactive thing here. There's a great Spanish excerpt up here for you all and if you know Spanish, that will make sense to you. It's been a long time since I took Spanish, so that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But when you think about applying that then to music, this is a piece of music that a student would read. And there are many things up there. It tells them how fast to go, tells them what notes they need to play at what time, tells them whether they're going to get louder or whether they're going to get softer. But I always find it amazing, I teach privately as well, and sometimes the parents have no idea about music. So the kids will go and they'll like show them what they worked on and you can just tell the parents are like sitting there going, uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh. But they really don't, you know, grasp the concept of it. So, you know, literacy for us is, you know, really getting the kids to interpret and to read and to write musical notation and to have an understanding of the musical language and terminology. That's across the board, kindergarten through 12th grade. So that's going to look a lot different in kindergarten than it is at a 12th grade level, but it's something that as a department, we felt was very important. Music performance, you heard some of that tonight, but that's the, students basically learning to apply the skills and the knowledge acquired through literacy on either their instrument or through their voice. Connections are basically what we were talking about a little bit before. We connect to various subject, you know, areas. I think whether it's math, I mean, connection, there's, there's tons of research out there, the connection between math and music. Whether it's science, you can talk about the physics of sound. Whether it's history, talking about the history of rock and roll or tying in with, you know, the Baroque era that they're learning about in their history class and the types of artwork that were going on at that period of time and the types of music, all of those similarities. So those would be music connections. And also music response, being able to intelligently talk about music. A lot of times, you know, students tell you, oh, that's, that's a good piece of music. Great, why? Right, so it's like the delving into wire, oh, that wasn't, I didn't like that music. Well, why? And being able to actually talk about that. So that, those four categories help students to get better in those particular areas. Moving forward, we are looking at a fourth and fifth grade instrumental music schedule. So that is included in your board packet. These are just proposed schedules, but basically this would start band in fourth grade as opposed to fifth grade, right along with starting orchestra in fourth grade as we currently do. Along with it, there would also be a beginning orchestra and a beginning band class where students would get to come together and put those musical skills in action together as a group, which they currently are not able to do unless they meet outside of school for that. So I'll let you guys look through those. Jumping into middle school, these are the current middle school music education offerings that we have. Quite a few of them, we have beginning band in sixth grade, there's also sixth grade band, chorus and orchestra. And then there is also a sixth grade general music course because at a sixth grade level, students are required in some way, shape or form to take a music course. So for those that do not want to go on the band, chorus, orchestra track, they have the general music option as well. Seventh grade, there's band, chorus and orchestra and the same thing for eighth grade. There are two extracurricular music offerings right now at a middle school level. We have the summer parade band where the middle school students can combine up with the high school students and if they so wish, they're able to join them for our Fourth of July community parades that we do and our parade out in Eagle. And we also just added the West Dallas Parade. And then they also have musical jazz, I'm sorry, middle school jazz band, which meets before school, two days per week. Our current high school music education offerings for this year, we have symphonic winds and percussion, which is the more advanced band performance ensemble. We have concert band, jazz band, which meets during zero hour before school, two days per week, concert chorus, orchestra, adaptive music, which is now in its second year of running. It's a program for our students with cognitive disabilities so that they're able to learn to perform instruments and sing and that sort of thing. We also have music production and industry, AP music theory, advanced chorus and rock band. There's a number of high school music related extracurricular offerings as well. Marching band is offered for the students from June through October. Basketball pep band is going to be starting up rather quickly now, November through February. Also, when I started four years ago now, there's a teacher that I know at music server I teach and he happens to be the Assistant Director of Bands at Marquette University and offered a really cool program that we've kept running for the past four years. Basically, in December, Marquette University is faced with the problem that a lot of their students who play in the pep band go home for college break and those sort of things. And this guy came up with the idea of, well, hey, wouldn't it be cool to get some high school kids in here to kind of fill their spots? So I'm extremely jealous of the students that get to take part in this because I love college basketball and they get better seats than you would probably pay 300 or 400 dollars for. But they get to sit right in with the band, it's a great experience for them, they're playing college tunes with, with college-aged people and really learning what that next level of music performance can be like at a college level. Jazz combo is new this year. We have jazz band, which meets on Mondays and Thursdays, but we also have jazz combo which meets on Tuesdays and Fridays. It's a smaller group, basically focused on more of the jazz improvisation track for students that want to learn how to solo and those sort of things. And then we also have a band leadership team, which is year-long and we have monthly meetings. So I feel that it's not just my job to, you know, decide the direction we want to go with our band program, but it's also our, our students' job because the more they have a buy-in to that, the more they're going to participate and be excited about it and share that enthusiasm with other people. Here are some historical statistics. I put all of these on one slide, but I thought I'd be nice to your eyes and I put them on multiple pages for you guys just to see a little bit better. In sixth grade, you'll notice that, I mean, numbers pretty much throughout sixth grade have held steady. Orchestra is definitely on the rise. This is a five-year perspective based on a report that was taken off of Infinite Campus off of Semester One. Orchestra has also risen over the past five years, from 11 in 2010 and 11, up to 28 this past year in sixth grade. Chorus, 31 in 2010, up to 63 this year. Seventh grade, see those numbers pretty much hold steady between the 40s and the 50s. Orchestra hanging in kind of that 10 range when we get to seventh grade and then orchestra, I'm sorry, chorus bump from 29 up to 52. Total enrollments you'll see in red along the bottom. Right now, in sixth grade, we have 150 students that are currently participating and seventh grade, 105 students and then in eighth grade, 104 students. High school, I think, is really exciting as we look at this. You'll notice the numbers going across the top, 2010 to 2011. But I think what's really exciting is to look along the bottom and you'll see that, you know, from 2010 to 2014, 15 school year, the school population has actually dropped at the high school by 85 students, yet the number of students that are enrolled in curricular music offerings has gone up significantly. So in 2010 through 2011, we had 24.7% of the school population participating in music of some sort at the high school level. And now we're up to 30.2% of students participating at the high school level, which I think is, is excellent. Last but not least, didn't want to take too much of your time, but just wanted to kind of throw out there, I know Dr. Holtz spoke to really community involvement and I think band and orchestra and choir can be an instrumental, no pun on words, part of that. And here's a number of different things we do, so I won't read through all of them, but, you know, I'm sure you guys have seen it, some of the things like the Fourth of July parades with the marching band. If you've come out to Falcon Fest, you've noticed the jazz ensemble out there. Mr. Stacy takes the chorus and does holiday care early around the community. Some new things that Dr. Holtz proposed this year are the Friends of Bainer Botanical Gardens picnic and their scholarship events, seeing how they support the high school with those sort of things. But once again, you know, there's a number of great opportunities for students who are interested in those. So that is all I have prepared for you guys, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, that was a really nice overview of programs. Who would like to go first?
Nancy?
I have two things, actually. First of all, I want to thank you for participating in the Greenfield Parade now.
Yes, absolutely.
I know, you know, that the band always participated in the Hills Corner Parade, but sometimes we forget that we're a part of Greenfield, even though we're actually in Greenfield. But because we're on the west side of town, they forget that we're a part of Greenfield as well. So I think whenever we can get Whitnell involved in Greenfield activities, it's a really good thing.
Definitely.
So that's my first thing. My second thing is, I don't know how many years ago it was now, three, four years ago, maybe, something like that, we had Drumline.
Okay.
And I know it was really popular at the time and I know that when we stopped doing that, that we had a lot of parents complaining about that.
Okay.
Has there ever thought about starting that up again?
I don't know, I necessarily didn't have anything prepared on that for today. You know, and I'm always open to talking about things, but you know, hopping back to this, I'd say with what we're doing right now, you know, we're actually doing better than what we were four years ago. So once again, I'm always open to discussion, but, you know, I, I'm generally really pleased at where we are right now, so.
Well, and I think that was an extracurricular activity for Drumline.
Yeah.
And I know that they played at basketball games and.
Yeah, we have, actually, we have the entire band play at basketball games now, which is kind of nice, you know, gives them an opportunity to be a part of all the student action that's going on and those sort of things, yeah.
Okay.
I remember that Drumline too, because didn't they one time pull up the garbage can and do the whole.
Mm-hmm, the stop thing.
Stop thing, yeah.
Yeah, I know they had a lot of fun with it and I know some people were unhappy when we stopped that, so.
It's before my time, but, yeah.
Probably, it seems like it was just a short time ago, but it's probably four or five years ago, maybe, so.
Other questions?
What, what do you need from us? I mean, I've, there's, I've never made any secret of how much I support the music and finance at Whitnell.
Sure.
Because I love the program and I've benefited from it, my whole family has. But when I see these numbers, 30% isn't, isn't bad, I'm glad to see that it's on the rise, but it would be great to see more. So what, what do you, what do you need from the board to help support and develop that program, particularly in younger grades, including those fourth and fifth graders?
I think you guys are being very supportive as it is, you know, Mr. Brzezinski proposing, giving you the new rock band proposal and the new beginning band proposal. I think those are all things that, you know, we want to put out there so that we attract, you know, not just the students that we, we want to expand as much as possible. For me, I mean, with beginning band, I think of myself and, you know, if I continued going to private school through eighth grade, I would have gone to high school and there would have been no opportunity to really learn an instrument because those people have played for six or seven years. And so courses like that or like rock band that maybe, you know, reach out to a different student population that normally would not take band or chorus or orchestra at the high school level. And now we're getting those students interested in music and we're, you know, teaching them those four categories, which if, if, you know, by the time those students leave high school, they're able to go out and be well-educated musicians, I think that's great because then they're going to sit on a school board, much like you guys are, and they're able to make well-informed decisions about music programs in the future as well, so.
Well, I'm excited to see what appears to be an expansion in the elementary schools that we're offering band at fourth grade as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I.
I'm also excited, yeah.
I'm looking forward to seeing how that develops too. And as a personal bias, anything you can do to get more string students involved? I'm always willing to be excited about that too. So, but thank you.
Hopefully the fourth grade band will take away from the string.
Away from the orchestra program, yep.
Can you back up a slide, please?
Sure. The med school?
Yeah, so, so for me, the way I look at this, the way I look at this kind of slide is like at sixth grade, 2010 to 2011, you look at the total 110. And then seventh grade, 2011, 2012, that's the same population of students, the same year group. So it goes from 110 down to 90, I think it is, and then down to 82 after that, or is that back up to 92? It's 92, so. Anyway, so if I look at it like that, I got a little bit alarmed at, at some of the numbers that I saw when you track it that way. Because when you look at your totals for the nine through 12 stuff on the, on the following slide, that makes it look much different than this. And so I just wanted to, obviously you're looking at this stuff, I just wondered if you had any idea of, of why the big drop-off?
I would say one of the biggest things, Lynn, maybe you could help me out schedule-wise, it is a requirement in sixth grade for students to take either general music or instrumental music, correct?
Yeah, DPI requires sixth grade students still have exposure to music. So they have to choose between, if they're not going to be an instrument or choir student, then they have to take the general music program.
So, I mean, part of what I think that might be attributed to, and I think it's something for us to look into, is, you know, maybe those students in sixth grade are taking band because, or orchestra or choir because they feel, you know, it's something they have to do that year. I think what we need to look at as, as teachers is say, well, how do we keep them going through seventh grade? And big numbers in sixth grade are because it's a requirement at that point, whereas in seventh grade, that requirement, you know, drops off.
I agree, because if you look at, like, for example, if you look at sixth grade, 2012, 13 versus 13, 14, 14, 15, you might think, ooh, what happened there? Well, what happened is a different group. That particular year group, 2013, 14, has always been like, even at the elementary school, one section smaller. So, so those numbers don't really, you know, when you compare it left to right, it doesn't really, it's apples and oranges. But when you go diagonally, it's, it's apples to apples. And, and so that's kind of what, what got me noticing, that it just seems that from sixth to seventh grade, the, there's a, there's a real drop-off there. And then it kind of balances out after that, but I just wondered if we, if we knew why and if there's something we could do about that. Because that's, to me, that's where it really.
Yeah, I think it's definitely worth investigating and, you know, right, I mean, I would say what it probably comes from, once again, is that sixth grade requirement and seventh grade not being required, but that's, I don't think not, it shouldn't be an excuse, we want to keep those students retained throughout.
But if there's a sixth grade requirement to do something, then obviously it's either the general music stuff or the band, orchestra, chorus. So, or what is, is the thought that rather than do general music, they'll pick one of those, but then in seventh grade, there is no requirement, so then they kind of, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that is exactly.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Other questions?
I say I can kind of just give you another little insight, personal insight is, for example, you know, from, sometimes when you go from like eighth grade over to the high school, you just start doing more things, you know, like, all of a sudden, maybe like soccer might take more time. Or, you know, so you may lose somebody who kind of liked band, but all of a sudden is finding themselves very stretched because of the other activities they might be involved in.
Yep, but this one slide is all in the middle school.
Yeah, right, right.
So that's why I was back here.
But when you go in from the middle to the high school, you always have a little bit.
Specifically on here, so, thanks.
Okay.
Yes, I, you know, I have a daughter that participates in your program and I like the idea that you have, you collaborate with the other teachers and you bring in the curriculum and you're using the music to what they're learning, that's awesome. I would never get that out of her, though.
I have to tell her what she's working on.
I'm glad I came tonight, let's put it that way.
So are we, Clay.
Okay, any other questions? Jonathan?
I'm good.
Jonathan's in quiet.
Um, no, I mean, I, you know, I was at the banquet last week for marching band and just seeing the interaction between the kids is phenomenal. I mean, across all age levels, they just get along, they really enjoy each other, there's not this, oh, your freshmen do this. They, you know, they do senior awards for the freshmen back and forth and it was just amazing to see how happy my son was just to be there and interacting with the other kids and see how they really have a strong, they bomb. And to see ways that we can improve that, whether it's bringing it back in the curriculum, whatever it is to keep growing the marching band and along with the rest of the program too, that's something we need to look into. But it's, it's phenomenal, he enjoys it. I've been a musician since fourth grade, so it's great to see that he's involved and that we have such a strong foundation for the program.
One of the concerns way back when was how we were changing music lessons and given that no one else came to speak here tonight, I'm assuming that all got resolved pretty well.
Yeah, I, Mr. DePistou and Ms. Colmas, I spoke with.
I can't see him, Mr. Brenner.
I can't see him.
The proposed schedule that you guys have in front of you would basically be the proposed schedule, it's, it's not in place now, but that would be for next year. And, and the nice thing is, you know, I think Edgerton necessarily maybe didn't get as much time in the, the past music lesson-wise and those sort of things. So this really breaks up the instrumental teachers' time where they'll be at both Hills Corners and Edgerton. And, you know, we're trying to give, once again, it just comes down to everything we're doing where we're trying to give kids, you know, equal experience and an equal knowledge base, whether they're taking orchestra or band or choir or rock band, whatever it might be, so I think that, that, you know, will help out as, as well.
Well, that was meant to be a compliment because we have gotten all these complaints, but the fact that they're not here, I mean, just the, it looks like you moved everything forward to me and I want to compliment you on that. And Dr. Holtz has some comments about the schedule?
Just that, I mean, we made a commitment to try to grow it from the bottom up and
And it's awesome when you see what has happened with our chorus, you know, how the kids get excited about it and come back again and the numbers grow. When you look at the schedule for Margot that's in the board packet, if there was an Ironman competition for music teachers, she wins.
Yep.
And her ability to grow the numbers that are going into that middle school, it, you know, that's, it's hard, as Eileen said, you know, when you go from one level to another, things change. You know, the fact that they even brought the beginning band in, because if you didn't participate in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and you happen to go to a Badger game and stay for the fifth quarter and decided, hey, I'd like to try that, now there's an opportunity for it, so, I'm very impressed, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We look forward to keeping in touch with our music program, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have our chapter two-twenty enrollment report, Mr. Joe Green. Come on up.
This really was intended as an informational item, just to keep you guys informed of the way we're thinking and just put it out there for your consideration, not asking that you take any action right now. I just wondered if there are any questions, any concerns?
When would we be taking action on this again? In two weeks?
So it's not really growing or diminishing, it's just kind of?
It's just staying kind of flat. Our primary focus has been on resident enrollments and some open enrollment considerations. Two-twenty is a, I think at one point it served a different purpose than it serves now. And so it's our enrollment staying kind of flat, not encouraging it, not dis- discouraging it.
So why wouldn't a parent choose two-twenty as opposed to open enrollment?
Well, they might. And there were a few that we have advised that they enroll, they attempt to enroll with us with the open enrollment program. And you'll note that there were three that came in on both and we were allowed to move them over so that, since they had siblings already in the two-twenty program, they could take advantage of the bus.
Right.
That's about it. So, we encourage them to go open enrollment.
Any other question?
If you don't, then this will come back in two weeks for a vote, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, we have first reading of revised Whitnall School District policies. Does anyone, we can kind of go one at a time here, you can read through your packet to see all the changes. Do you, Quinn, do you have any comments?
Well, on the very first one, early admission, Ms. Colmas, could you tell us the little switch in the law that-
Yeah.
-enacted all this?
A little, it's a pretty major.
Well, one sentence, right?
Yeah, but it changes everything.
I believe it's Act forty-one, but I probably can't figure it out well. The, the little switch in the laws you put in is basically that kindergarten, most people look at it as though kindergarten is now a required school year, but it's not quite phrased that way in the act. It is stated that students must attend kindergarten to move to first grade. So it really is about making kindergarten mandatory for students who are rolling for first grade. If they have been, if we have a new first grader enrolling, we verify that they attended kindergarten or it's equivalent. So that's, that's the change in the act.
Is that a problem for anyone? Has that been a problem since? No?
In what way is it?
There was a time when parents could choose to not, I hate to admit this.
Kindergarten program can be part-time or full-time.
Right. Oh, it doesn't have to be full-time?
No.
So if a parent wants to do half-time?
We have had some parents opt for part-time, not in recent years.
Okay.
But there's also always the option that parents can homeschool for the kindergarten year. There's, we really haven't had an issue with, in a physical way, parents having an issue with being involved.
That was my question, anyone else? All right, then that policy can come forward, any other comments on student attendance and truancy?
Mr. DiCristo, do you want to tell us the little caveat with the six to five each?
What, what Mrs. Colmas just stated, the reason why, we had to make an adjustment to our policy based upon that change in law. And then we had a committee that worked on procedures which are in the board, which are referenced in the board policy. So the committee worked more on making sure that our procedures fit what our current state law states. And so we made those adjustments.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on policy four-thirty-one or six-ninety?
And Matt, do you want to give a little synopsis why we changed this?
Sure.
We'll move to the next one.
We, we need to change because-
Policy six-ninety.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Yeah, come on up.
Don't be shy.
It's easier, thank you.
And you are-
Good-looking fellow, isn't he?
Thank you.
We, the necessity to change this plan was just to make it easier on administration to be able to dispose surplus property without having to take all the menial items to the, to the board, like student, old student desks, you know, from the, from the sixties that we still have in storage, things like that. So it's just going to help us clean out our storerooms and get our schools a little more tidy.
Is there a problem, though, with, with assembling a list to, to get approved, just like, which gives us the opportunity to ask questions? I mean, I know, for example, there were tables at HCE that were eliminated and I know that at least at certain times of the year, they, they would get a lot of use, but not a bunch of the year. And I know there was a space issue and that kind of stuff. But at least it would give us opportunities to ask the questions about the equipment that we have before it goes away, except for if we do this policy as rewritten, then we don't get that opportunity.
In the, in the procedure for six-ninety, I believe it spells out that the information that's taken off of like the property open, property in the open or, or any contents within the building, that there is a reporting mechanism for that, that there's a form within the procedure.
Does that mean it goes through us or not?
Typically, it has not. This is kind of new ground for me since I've been here. The truck that we just recently got rid of was actually the first thing that I ever got rid of since I've been working here. So this is all kind of new ground for me. That's something that, you know, if the, if the policy's approved, I'm sure we could add it to the procedure and-
No, no, let me clarify.
Yeah. Please.
Quinn, clarify.
Please.
Well, I don't want to clarify, but I, I think we need to stay out of that.
Okay, this was the intent of changing this because at, too many lower-cost items are coming to the board and it gets us into a level of detail we didn't want.
So what's the threshold?
And this is it, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, and it coincides with our-
We don't want to be getting involved in the per, the elimination of a table at a school would not be our job.
So in other words, the-
Trying to bring it back.
I understand, so, so the truck issue then, under the new policy, would not come under?
Correct.
Okay, so, and then the, I thought I saw something here, but, so that fifteen, because I saw a difference, I was trying to see, I thought there was some confliction between two of the paragraphs where it, I don't know. I just need to reread it because I thought I saw some, some disagreement between the paragraphs, so, thanks.
But, but it coincides with our purchasing policy.
Yes, yeah, if, if-
The amount, the money amount. And under fifteen thousand, we need to let the man do his job. Anything over, then we, we talk about it.
Well, I would also guess that if you keep your threshold at fifteen thousand for the disposal of property, most of the things that we dispose of are old, or older, or lived path through useful life, but it's a salvage value. And I would suggest too, that very few things that would be disposed of would hit that fifteen thousand mark. So I don't know if the intent is really numerical as it is so much process.
Are you saying you support this?
I'm thinking that fifteen might be too high.
I agree.
Because if, if there's a little bit of oversight, it's supposed to be the intent as to how we're disposing of the district property and if we set a limit that high, then there's not going to be much that we're going to be looking at.
Let's take that truck.
No, let me, let's give Nancy.
My question is, who sets the value of the items to be disposed and how are they set?
Talk to Matt.
Yep, we, in the situation with the truck, which is the most recent, we utilized Wisconsin online surplus auctions to help us base mark, or give us a benchmark for the cost of the truck. And we also, in that situation, used the Blue Book, we used a little bit of Google searching. And the student came up with a fair and reasonable number for the truck. And I'm sure we'd use similar means. It, just, I think, I think it'd be a common sense approach in depreciating equipment that was sold. The other option that's out there too is rummage sales for the, for the board. I mean, if we want to do a district rummage sale at some point, we could, you know, haul it all down to the gym and whatever's not sold off could go, you know, to Miller Compressing or it could go to another school maybe if they wanted it. But those are all things procedurally that we can talk about if need be.
That could go in the procedure, okay.
It could be in the procedure.
So the last, last sentence in the second paragraph, no real property may be sold except as authorized by the annual meeting. I don't understand-
Real estate.
Real estate is real property, okay. And then, uh, so the responsibility for this, for the sale, the last paragraph, sale or disposal of surplus, obsolete personal property is also placed with the superintendent or designee through the direction of the school board. So, but the, but the paragraph above that pretty much states the exception of fifteen thousand dollars, right? Or am I looking at that?
But also, I think that we added fixtures, furnishings, and equipment ahead of that to delineate that between real estate property. That's why we specifically chose those three words, because that pretty much will handle just about everything within the building and outside of the building.
I mean, I agree with Quinn, with the, if we're trusting Matt to keep the buildings and our students in the building safe and we're trusting him with their safety, then giving him the ability to sell items that would not consume any more than fifteen thousand, I think in the grand scheme of things, I don't think that's asking a lot. I, I understand what you're saying. To me, it doesn't come down to a matter of, well, on the one hand, it doesn't come down to a matter of trust, it's, it is a matter of process. And, and on the other hand, with the, the process, and some of the other stuff I do, the process is set up so that the whole trust and, and who you like and what kind of deals are done, all kinds of stuff, and any kind of allegation is, is removed with a good, solid process.
We have one in place.
Let's take a look at the, I, well, again, I kind of questioned the number, but, because let's take a look at the truck. Some people would look at the truck not in its dollar value, but as to what it is. And, and they would wonder, well, why did it get fast-tracked to this young man, you know? And then it could be allegations on all kinds of stuff, where if, if that truck went through the process that it did, there's, I mean, there's, there's no question, it's, it's clean, it's above reproach. And, and so it doesn't come down to a matter of trust versus allegations and that kind of stuff. So in a sense, I'm talking about top cover for, for everybody involved.
Well, let's hear from Eileen and then we'll-
Which was my point.
What are, what are your thoughts on this? And then we'll see if we can find a common ground.
I think you said there's procedures that go along with this as well.
We do have procedures.
So does the procedures address some of the concerns that-
Yeah, I can't answer that right now, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be, you know, something we-
But procedures is not something that the policy committee is focusing on, you guys are focusing on the-
But if, I'm going to say, if the procedures support the concerns, you know, or address the concerns he has as far as being able to-
Right.
You know.
Procedures, I'm sorry.
Yeah, support why the sale was made the way it was, or to who it was, or whatever, then that would-
Yeah, if we were doing something large, I mean, let's just say we're going to give a hundred desks, I'm sure that's something that we would want to memo, you know, the board on if we're going to take a large action like that.
But again, if that's, if those hundred desks are valued at less than fifteen thousand dollars, you wouldn't have to. So that's why the procedures, even though the policy is part of the, is what's relevant to the policy committee, the procedures that are set in place can be relevant to the decisions or the, the way the, you know, the, the policy is, is written as to whether it's deemed sufficient or not.
Right.
Let's go back to Quinn.
Well, we, we did, at the last policy committee, we did speak to this. And Matt, and, and Matt knows that if he does sell a truck, he needs to document the process that was, happened, that happened. Just what he said, that he checked it on this site and, and fair value record and documented, and there it is.
Again, Matt, don't get me wrong, it's not a matter of trust.
I understand.
But I think we need to have the right combination of, of written procedure and written policy to make sure that there's-
Right, but I'll caution that, you know, the intent of why I brought this forward was to try to clean things up administratively for us, not layer more on. So I mean, if we, if you guys can come to a consensus, maybe on a dollar amount threshold, that would still help me administratively, you know, work on things. The fifteen thousand dollar number was picked primarily because that is the purchasing number that superintendent or designee is authorized to purchase without board approval. So we chose that number as the threshold for board action or non-board action.
So that makes a lot of sense to me, that we picked the fifteen thousand, because that is what we're, what, they can purchase anything below fifteen thousand and we trust them with that. So what we're saying here is we also would trust them to sell anything below fifteen thousand. So I can agree with that rationale. If anyone has a different number, the way to move this forward in my mind is either we're going to change some language in this policy or we could look for a different number that you think would make sense. I personally agree with the fifteen thousand because it aligns with what we trust them to do in terms of purchasing. Now, so John, would you, is there another number that you're thinking would work for you?
I, I, I actually object to the use of the word trust because that implies that I don't trust him and I kind of resent that. So it's not a trust thing for me, and I'll say, but it's not a trust thing for me, I trust him. It's got nothing to do with that.
Transparent maybe would be a-
I'm talking, exactly. So, again, to me, regardless of the number, I want to know that there is, it is a, there's a formal process in, in place.
There's a cross reference to a disposal of surplus property procedure right in the policy itself.
Okay, have you looked it up? Because I haven't seen it yet.
One more question.
Hold on, let's give Lowell a chance to talk and then let's go back discussing this.
Like Quinn said before, a lot of the stuff you guys are talking about is in the procedures. And actually Doug's involved more than I am. When they set the price, you know, whatever is reasonable, it's, it goes through the district's business office, they verify the fair market value, then it comes to the superintendents, and that's when, if, if we have permission to go ahead and move it forward. Right now, when you look at the way the policy's written, we can't get rid of anything without talking to the board. So we put that dumpster out there in the summer and throw things in it, actually we're-
Potentially, depending on what we're throwing in there, it could be in violation of the policy.
Because we're disposing of surplus furniture and equipment.
So the purpose of this policy is to say, we really want the district to dispose of surplus property and that it's a, it's in a manner consistent in the best interest of the school district.
Mm-hmm, always.
So that's what we're saying in this policy. So that word trust is how we do a lot of business and it's not, it's not saying you don't trust them, John, I know.
But so you're trusting the policy to be-
It's how we do, we delegate certain things to administration. And when we hear there's problems, then we start to address.
Mm-hmm.
We go back, and I appreciate that this board is so serious now about looking at our policies and making sure that we are either following them or we're changing them to improve our policies. Either we have to change our practice or improve our policy. So I go back to the question of, I think transparency is always, is also important, but I do, and I think our board wants to be transparent. But every detail, I, I just, you know, where do we want to draw the line on this particular policy? I'll bring it back to that. Is fifteen thousand going to work? And if not, we can always change that and bring the policy back different if we want to agree on something right now. So is there a better number? Or, or do you want to just take the time to look through the policy, the procedures, John? And then if you want to bring a number forward at the, when we approve this, we could always change it then too. It's a two-step process. Nancy?
I don't have a problem with the fifteen thousand dollars. I would like to add something, though, about having that dollar amount be verified by our business manager. That would be the only thing I would suggest to have that in there. Because that would eliminate any negative impression on anybody who's trying to dispose of property and-
That could be in the procedure. I would suggest that the board, if we start directing our business director, then we're looping around our job. Our job is to direct the superintendent, so you might say-
Well, our job's to write the policy. And if the policy, we decide to, you know, the superintendent or his-
That's who should be in charge of it.
The superintendent or his designee, we can say that.
We can say that, not point directly to the business manager. I would recommend we don't start doing that.
I think it's actually in the proc, all prices will be established by the district's business office.
On a fair market value basis.
Is that Doug or is that?
Debbie Doug.
Debbie Doug.
Anyway, so.
The other thing too, I just want to add, is we do have, Eric has started a really nice database for all, you know, when we started buying all the Macs and stuff for inventory purposes. So a lot of our property that, in my department, is now on that database as well and there's depreciation numbers that you can put in there. So as, as we get rid of things like the Ford, I can go back into the database and click it off and it still shows when it was sold, what it was sold for. But now we have a very good tracking system in place that actually follows the procedure. I didn't, I didn't even know if you guys were aware of that, so.
Well, the procedure doesn't, I'm trying to find here quickly, and I don't think the procedure mentions anything about required documentation. Wait a minute, will be documented on a fixed asset inventory.
That would be a-
That's all sales of furniture and equipment. I, I just need some time to, to look that over, but, I mean, I understand your concept. I'm, I'm, and again, it's, it's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of providing you with the appropriate-
Right.
-cover.
Right, and, and helping us become a little bit more efficient administratively that way, so. Anything you guys can do to help us out is great.
Too efficient and streamlined and it can end up creating problems, is, is all, and that's what I want to avoid.
Mm-hmm.
But I also appreciate that we brought this forward because we knew there was a problem when we sold the truck. We're spending an awful lot of time- We're spending an awful lot of time on the sale of a truck.
I don't know.
We're about governance, we're not about day-to-day operations. And so if we're going to continue to focus on impacting programs like we did tonight, if we're going to continue to look at the results and the performance of this district, we need to find better ways then to allow our administrators to be accountable, but yet to run the operational side. So I'm glad we brought this forward so we could look at that. I hope that in the future, we don't have to spend that kind of time, and I hope we can get comfortable with a number then, and that the procedures make sense to all of us. So like you said, John, you have time to read it for.
Yeah.
So, okay.
But I just think, but on the truck, in a second. I think on the truck, though, I like to say, I don't think we spent much time on it at all, and I like the way you handled it. I think it was very, your presentation was quick and clean, and it was obvious, and I think it was a unanimous decision on the board, so I don't think that.
That really wasn't fast, but.
I don't think that took a lot of time at all.
It wasn't clear, so we're better to move this forward to make sure we know. At what point can they just act without us, John? So you're probably right there. Any other comments? Seeing none, it looks like this is coming back as is, and we will probably talk more about it at the next meeting unless everyone's comfortable, and then it'll be on the consent agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have discuss and take possible action on district goals one, three, and four. And if anyone, we did change the language a little bit on four, so that would be the only thing. Otherwise, we have looked at all the rest of these, and most of these goals are being implemented already. We just want to formalize this and get this up on our website. So does anyone have any comments or questions on the final document of our goals for this year? Seeing none, then we will move to, while we could take the action on this tonight. Would someone like to entertain a motion? I would entertain a motion to take action on district goals one, three, and four.
So moved.
Been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and up next is new business, discuss and take possible action on modification of the start date of the December eighth board meeting. I'm assuming that's because of the survey.
Two reasons. As I was talking to some of the board members, we don't want to give a perception. There's a Packer game Monday night, that Monday night. We don't want people to think that we're doing something on a night when there's going to be a lot of people gone.
Well, if we play the Bears. We don't have to watch it. We know y'all.
It's the point spread, is what it was.
Oozing.
So there are two reasons. One is.
Bear fans in the audience. Sorry, that wasn't my idea.
Glad you signed him forever.
Bill Foster said he'd love to come and talk about the results of the.
Survey.
The survey, but he'd like to do it at five-thirty because he wants to be home by seven-thirty.
But we also need to make.
Well, I don't like that at all.
And then the second reason is, as one of the board members pointed out, would, it gives, we don't want to give the community the perception that we're doing it while we know everybody's going to be tied up at a Packer.
Okay, so we don't need to change this time? We're just doing it because of Bill Foster wanting it?
Well, two reasons. There is two reasons. One, his availability.
Okay.
And then the second one was, it doesn't give that.
Do it during the Packer.
I get the flip side. I don't like the first opinion, but when you say that, people want to be home to watch the game. I get that, so I.
Could we start at six instead of five-thirty?
He needs two hours.
Because I think a lot of people work, and you're going to hit.
Is that the only agenda item?
No, no, that, that night is our, both board meetings all in one.
There's just one meeting, board meeting night, board meeting.
Well, we're going to miss the Packer game.
So we'll do the committee.
So do you guys want to start early at five-thirty?
Well, it's really important that we make sure the whole board is here, too.
Exactly.
Because of what is being covered.
That's why we're asking.
It's a fairly important meeting. I mean, we don't want to eliminate folks or also cut it short. I mean, and he's like, I want to be out of here at a certain time. It's a, it's kind of a big deal.
Is five-thirty too early?
Does it have to be done at a board meeting? Can't we do it like the following Monday?
Well, we're up against time as well, right?
I think it's, I think it'd be more important to do the survey that night, then.
Can we change the board meeting to the fifteenth?
But don't we have to give this through the process to get it on the ballot by a certain time?
I think we should do the survey that night in case, yeah.
You mean, change the board, we have to.
And change the board meeting to the fifteenth. Is everybody available on both of those nights? John, I know you travel. That's why this is important.
Yeah.
To start tinkering with this, because you plan ahead of time, I know.
I can't answer it tonight.
Okay, so you're proposing that we discuss only the survey on the eighth and have the regular board meeting on the fifteenth? Or that we discuss the survey on the fifteenth and have the regular board meeting on the eighth?
Let's do a survey as soon as we can.
Survey on the eighth.
To make decisions in a timely manner. And I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Well, actually, it may work out well that way if we do the discussion on the eighth, and then we have the meeting on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, in case we have to take action.
Right. That would be a good thing.
Okay, let's tentatively go with that. Would we start at six? Five-thirty, six? What do you want to do?
Make it two-thirty.
Six would be.
We have plenty of time.
Six o'clock. Six o'clock gives the public.
Tailgate party. Doug's popping.
Six o'clock?
Didn't. I'd schedule a lunch in the shoulder, that's all.
Yes, yes, six o'clock?
I don't know if I can. On the eighth?
On the eighth. That's our regular board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if I can do two important Mondays in a row because, I mean, if I, you know.
That's the night of the high school band concert.
Which one? Which night?
The fifteenth.
The eighth.
Oh, the, well, that's our regular board meeting, though. We always.
The band concert starts at seven, correct? So if we started at five-thirty, we should be done by seven with the survey, you would think.
Or even if we start at six and an hour before.
Six to seven, yeah.
Probably be longer than that.
I don't have a problem with five-thirty.
Okay, Steph, five-thirty.
I don't think we should rush it.
Five-thirty, Steph?
Just.
You could make it. Eileen, five-thirty? John, five-thirty?
If I'm here, yeah, but I'm just, again, concerned about.
Can you make five-thirty? Well, let's start at five-thirty. I like that we can accommodate then parents that might have band, kids in band on this board. That would be nice. And the public that might have kids in band. This has nothing to do with the Packer game.
I was just going to say, wait, wait.
Nothing.
No, it does, it does.
No, it does. It impacts the Packers, too.
I like the first side of it, Mr. Foster's idea, but then you say, well, the parents are going to want to watch the game as well. We want the parent, and many parents here are telling us what.
Right, we do. No, we do.
Well, that's really what they do. The discussion centered around, would it give the impression?
Could we do that, do sandwiches for the board? That way you guys don't have to worry about eating and getting here. We'll just do something light and. Quinn can buy.
I've never missed a meal in my life.
We'll take care of that. All right, so that's set then, and then we'll do a regularly scheduled board meeting on the fifteenth. That would be at six-thirty then.
A rescheduled board meeting on the fifteenth.
Rescheduled. It's not, it's a, it would be considered a special board meeting.
Or just moving over.
We will do our regular business there, but it is a special board meeting. Yeah. There's our policy.
Are you still going to do the committee of the whole and the business meeting?
Yes, yes. On the fifteenth. That's what we were doing, okay.
And do we need a motion to amend our scheduled?
Yes, we do. We do. We need a motion.
Hang on, folks, ten out. We are going to most likely need a finance committee meeting in December. So I would hate to do it on the twenty-second because.
We actually have the twenty-second as a board.
We could possibly, as a full board, cover any emergency items that night that you needed to do in the committee.
Or if you kept it really short, we could.
Do the committee that night, too.
Go right into a finance committee after the board.
Let's see how the agenda shifts.
That was my only caveat, is that you're taking away my Monday.
No, you're taking away ours with the survey. It's all your fault.
You're taking away my paycheck.
Sure, blame the project on the finance committee.
Well, now, wait a minute. Part of the job, John, I can't help you there. Okay, December, we would need to entertain a motion then to change our regular board meeting from December eighth to December fifteenth at six. Well, we should start early if we want to try to get a committee meeting as well. Six o'clock. Let's change that one to six o'clock on the fifteenth. I know, John, you don't know yet.
So moved.
Okay, moved. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. It all in favor of changing the regular board meeting from Monday the eighth to the fifteenth at six o'clock PM? Say aye.
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 Oppose? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy and Lowell. And then on December eighth, just a reminder then that that meeting would be, do we need to take action on that? No, we took action to change it, but that night we will have a special board meeting. That'll be the special board.
The eighth is considered your special board.
Special board meeting to review survey results. You may be able to do your facility committee meeting that night.
Yes.
After the, during the Packer game.
We'll, no, we'll figure out.
Do we have a TV on the background?
Oh, this is not easy work, folks.
Kathy, when you send a board deck out, please highlight it, reminder fifteen, five-thirty, six o'clock.
All different times and everything.
Yes, please do. Color code it, whatever. All right, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration? Seeing none, we'll move to board member announcements. Does anyone have announcements?
Fill up your bags for Dukka. They pick them up on Saturday.
Oh, right.
Saturday.
Put your bags out for Dukka food.
Thirty thousand pounds.
That's a lot.
I want to compliment the district, the Greenfield Police Department, and everyone that put the heroin summit on. That was very eye-opening, very informative, very well done. The legislative breakfast, again, I want to thank those of you that could attend, and it was, it was very helpful. Now, those legislators will remember us when they're voting on things because we have started a stronger relationship with them, so that went over well. And then finally, I want to thank the art department. We're getting some more art in the boardroom, and they're going to keep us a little more current so we can see the wonderful work that our students and our arts staff does. So those are all my announcements.
I have one community service one. The ice rink frame was set up over the weekend, and we had a high school student that came out to help, so we can add him to our list of community helpers. And then, weather permitting, the plan to open the ice rink is Sunday, December fourteenth. And that's, this is going to work out good, though, because it's the same day as a green and gold Packer tailgate with Santa.
Oh, yes. Anyone who would like to run for the school board. The School Board Academy's on Monday night at six o'clock. You will just take a half an hour to tell you how wonderful and fun, but really how important this work is, and answer any questions you might have about running for the school board and what the job entails. Thank you for reminding me, Kathy. Anything else? Not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.